Yes, Dan, that's correct. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order and we'll have his pastor, Brian Cowan, from the Seventh Bay Adventist Church here. No, he's not. Well, that's a good start. So we'll have Peter Braun, our council president. We'll leave us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will step up and go first? So what I've just said in front of you, my name is Rob Taylor. My address is 1180 Fourth Street Northeast here in Bandon. I pull this down to talk. That would be very good.
Please thank you, that's very helpful. I'll pull it down so that we can understand.
Thank you, yes. So what I've just put in front of you, as you can see, is a declaration of the people to annul and dismiss Oregon governor's arbitrary sanctions against commerce, association, and liberty. As the citizens of Bandon, a number of us have attended the meeting here tonight to express our outrage at the governor's trespass upon our rights as delineated in the Bill of Rights in the U.S. Constitution. Specifically, she has impaired our ability to pursue life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness as we see fit within the law. And she has laid down unconstitutional mandates that are based on science that is arguable. Whether you believe the science that she's using is accurate or not, there are arguments on both sides that are legitimate. And we, as a community, business owners in this community, citizens in this community, are done with the governor trespassing on our constitutional rights. So we have created this declaration to state that the people of Coos County will no longer comply with the governor's unconstitutional mandates. And so our call to the city council, and we will take this before the county commission as well, is to stand in unity with the members of the community who are opposed to the governor's unconstitutional mandates and declare that in Coos County, we will abide by the U.S. Constitution, not by the governor's unconstitutional mandates. We're gathering signatures on this. This is picking up major steam, and this is not going to be the last time you hear of this. We're going to be back to the next meeting, and there will be more people. I guarantee you, this is picking up steam. We are not in opposition to the city council. We don't come here in an adversarial tone. We come here to say, please, stand with us. That's our goal, that's our intent. And when we come back in a couple of weeks, we're going to have a whole stack of signature sheets and a number for you to help you in your consideration of how you're going to address this. So that's about what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob.
Go Bandon.
Okay, and then, does anybody else want to?
By a number of business owners locally here, pastors and churches that I've been meeting with, that are very, very discouraged about, and very concerned about our community. I appreciate how you brought it up, Rob. We're not here, we're not attacking our council. We know, according to even God's word, that God has placed a governing authority. But then, we also know our constitution has also said that the people govern that government, we the people. The word of God says, "In the counsel of many, there's wisdom." So that's what's great about counsel of many. The Bible also says, "In the counsel of many, there's safety." So that's what's good about counsel of many. So we're going to be continually bringing people before you, local business owners and stuff, that are very concerned about losing their businesses. And I fully understand that people have to work, they have to have business. Matter of fact, we've decided in our church to begin to pray for our businesses specifically in our local community here, and bring them prayer cloths and drop them off to the businesses. Because we want to see our community thrive. We want to see our community grow like it has over the years. This has been an awesome community. Like I said, we've been here 35 years, my family. Most of my family's here, except for a son and a daughter, and they're on their way back here. You know, it's just all those. But anyway, I just wanted to share that, and I know that I've taken quite a bit of time already, so... But we're going to be bringing you, even, I have a couple of doctor friends, my daughters are RNs, and we're going to be bringing you some facts about the mental health issues that are starting to happen, the hopelessness that people are beginning to feel. They're losing their livelihoods, their business. Next thing they'll be losing is their home if they can't pay their payments, and on and on and on it goes. And I think we all know what's going on. But anyway, we're just going to be bringing you more proof, more facts behind this, and some facts about the COVID issue, because there's conflicting information about that, as we all know.
Thanks.
But anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
... studio. And we have experienced a 70% financial loss this year. 7%. I have to look at these families, and I see the strain in their eyes. I'm going to keep worrying, to shut down, to shut down, because all we got left. We need you to stand up for us. Something has stopped to be done. Please. Thank you.
How y'all?
Hi there.
I think I know everybody on board.
She may not know you, so give her a name and a card.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to thank you, council, because I know you're standing behind your local businesses. The mandates that are put forward are bullshit. They don't belong in our public venue. You guys have control of our little city. I moved here 30 years ago, little after him, only 30 now, yeah. I come from the land of sun and happiness and nobody cares, yeah, everybody's out. Well, this COVID stuff, it's bad news. It's bad news everywhere. Has it hit us that hard here? We live on the Pacific Ocean, yeah? It's so beautiful, clean air. I see people driving in their car with masks. What? Alone. It's terrible. But I support all these local businesses as much as I can, and I mean it. Get out and support on Chris, all you guys. Time to put the money down. No more bullshit. We have to stand. You guys, Peter, we need to come out. We were out there singing Christmas carols, huh? On Sunday? Oh, amen! Well, that was so cool, huh? We had more people coming, going, "Yeah, hallelujah!" Jesus is in charge. We're not. I'm not going to stand on the pulp bed. But you guys must understand, we need to open our businesses. We have friends in the law enforcement business. Nobody's going to stand and arrest somebody, give a ticket. Why you give me somebody a ticket? Nobody's going to give them tickets to our little town. Well, I am appreciative with you guys, and you are in charge, and I'm sorry there's noise outside, but we need to stand behind our businesses and let them go. Open. I'm sorry about this, or what I wrote. We live in the land of the free. Don't ever forget that. God bless you guys, may the day be gone. Oh, good, not gone. Later.
Rob Taylor, 935 Division Street. I'm mayor. My first comment, Claudine Hamdussen, I want to thank you for your service. Thank you for doing what you did. I know we didn't always agree, but we need more people stepping up and doing it. I wish they would. And if we did, we may be in a different situation than we are in today. If you hear what's going on outside, you've got people on bullhorns, they're waving flags, there's about a half a dozen to eight people out there, and they're angry. If you notice, some of the people in here, they've got almost tears in their eyes because they're upset, because they're losing their livelihood. At a certain point, dying of COVID will be preferable than slowly watching your children starve to death because there's nothing left to feed them. You've got to take action. And my recommendation to this council is that we have a work session. You just got requested several months ago for a work session on an inclusionary resolution which is promising that we are all systemically racist. I know this because I know they asked you, and this is not going to be acceptable coming down the pike. We need property protection. We need to protect our rights. Your number-one fundamental job is to protect the rights of people's liberty. The right of commerce is an absolute necessity. If you cannot go to the market and buy bread and milk and food and other supplies, you're going to die. Without the market, we don't exist. Without us, the market doesn't exist. It's an organic creature, and we're starving it to death. So I recommend that we have a work session. I recommend that we discuss what this council can do, all the way up to the point of outright disobeying the governor's orders, because they are just that orders. We are a constitutional republic. We do not live under a queen or a king, a monarchy or dictatorship. We live under the rule of law. And for the last year, we've watched the rule of mobs. The mob rule.
Just keep her down, okay? Continue, you don't need to shout. We can hear you.
I don't think they hear.
Go on, Rob.
And it gets very upsetting that we have government tell us everything that we should do and say, including the volume of your voice. It's ridiculous that we have these dictators who take charge, pass emergency rules, proclamations that are not laws, that are not legislated, and then they think they're gods. Then they want to tell you what you can and can't say, and then they want to put a time limit on it. I suggest you get a work session going, and I suggest you do something about it, because this is only going to escalate. The last time I said that was to the Coos Bay City Council. Within three weeks later, they nearly had a riot on their hands. You might want to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Larry Beckstitch.
What?
Thank you.
There you go.
Larry what?
Larry Beckstitch. And under 87704, he's speech inflating. I'm not very articulate, but I like to talk. But, you know, I didn't like Robert there. I didn't care for him at all. I used to get mad at him on the radio. But I've come to like this guy, because he speaks the truth. And today, I'm standing here because on his show today, I hear a guy call in and said they're closing the schools again. I said, "No, I didn't hear nothing about that." I left in Coos Bay, and halfway home, I get an email from the principal over at the Ocean Crest School, saying, "We're closing the school down again." You know, this is wrong.
Amen.
I was raised at an eight- and nine-year-old. I'm a great-grandfather of these two girls, and I'm doing everything I can to make their lives stable. And our governor, I don't know who she dances to, but she doesn't dance to the people. And I think this community here needs to step up and take action. My little girl, she's down here in tears, because she's a very social person, and she can't be social. She likes to go to church. She can't go to our church. You know, my grandmother's ancestors come over here, England, then they went through New York, and they traveled through Missouri, where the governor of Missouri put an extermination order on the church. But we persevered. I had a great-great-granduncle die on the shores of the Missouri, escaping the mobs. But they persevered. They went to the Salt Lake Valley, where they caught off the feds at the mouth of the canyon. Because they persevered, and they've grown into five million strong. Or are we? Are we weak? Can't we stand up to a czar up in Oregon? I'm telling you right now, I'm not very happy with this lady.
Hey, let me ask you a question, though. From what I understand, and I don't know, but from what I understand, the decision to close the schools today, it was just abandoned, and that that was a local decision. I don't think it came from the state. Now, I don't know if they failed to meet the majorities, I don't know that. Maybe somebody else knows exactly what happened.
Okay, how many cases have we had of COVID?
But now is not the time to debate that issue. We need to get the information.
True, but I just wanted to...
But who knows how many cases of COVID we've had in the grades K through 5? Does anybody here know that?
No.
Can anybody verify why they closed this school until my little girl, she has to stay home and study? No, nobody can answer that. That's your job.
No, sir, you should bring us up with...
You're the leader, you're our leader. We count on you guys.
Sure, sir, you should bring us up with the school district. We do not rule the school district.
The school board, go to the school board.
Oh, we'll be at the school.
That's what you guys do, get past it, but, you know...
When is our next meeting?
How are you?
This issue is going to the school board. I'm curious. We don't have any control.
You do have some power.
No, we have some... Over the city, the schools have their own governing body.
Now, what are you going to do about the families? These families, they can't go to work because they've got to stay home, and now they lose their job. Is that your job too? Or not your job?
Sadly, not.
Is that the job of the education? Who is going to help these people go to work?
People have to do it. The people have to do it, brother. That's why we're here and asking the council to stand with us, because the government governs at the will of the people.
The pastor says, "God has not abandoned us." We have abandoned God.
We can't go down and torture the audience.
Well, I'm just...
But we appreciate, I understand your concerns about the children in the school. Believe me, I understand.
Well, it's not good enough to understand. We've got to have action.
We're under all the same rules.
Whose rules?
Whose rules?
Whose rules? The people rule. That's the whole point, mayor.
Please, I want some feedback on what you all feel about it.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Yes, please.
I don't want to make light of any of you, okay? But you're preaching the fire. There are three business owners up here.
We don't know you stand by us.
Their business barely even made rent last month.
Yeah.
Amen.
Yeah.
And I know that Chris isn't doing much business, and I know Peter's business is awful.
Then you understand.
70%.
So you are behind us?
Of course we're behind you.
Then let's do it. Let them just say so.
We wouldn't know that...
I have something to you, please. A good friend of mine owns Lloyd's, and I said, you know, "What do you think about all this?" And she said, "Brian," she says, "OSHA comes in, and they yank my liquor license, and they yank my gambling license. I'm done."
Yep.
They've got a gun to our heads. And I agree, we should all band together and do something about it. But the governor has a gun to our head, okay? We cannot do anything. We can encourage people to fight back, but believe me, the governor has the gun to our heads.
But we need the backing of the mayor, and the police, and everybody involved.
I can assure you that our local police department and the sheriff's department, they're not going into businesses and saying, "Hey..."
No.
They're not coming into our homes on Thanksgiving, but the bottom line is, this is being enforced by the state's regulatory agencies. OSHA, OLCC, that's who's doing it, okay?
Has anybody seen that happen in our town, Brian?
I will assure you, this council will do everything to support your cause. That's all we can do.
Bring it on.
Do you all feel the same way then?
I got money.
All right.
Sorry. Bring it on.
We do appreciate, and I do want to tell you, though, that if things proceed as they are with the number of cases that are in Coos County, we know that every day they're escalating. It may be that the January meeting may very well be on Zoom. So, because right now, we're under a certain limitation as to how many people legally can be in a room. I mean, maybe we're okay tonight, I don't know.
See, you say legally, but it's not a law.
Yeah.
It's not a law.
It's not illegal.
That's the point, it hasn't been adjudicated.
Rob, the thing is, there have been a lot of challenges already, but the restaurants, the restaurant association has challenged the report, and they lost.
We're unduly singled out, and we're the safest...
I know.
We're the safest we can be.
We've hired extra people. I've got 13 people that depend on me for their income.
100%, we understand.
And if I don't comply, my liquor license and my lottery license is pulled from me. So it's extortion.
What do we do as a community to shut down OLCC's force in this town? What do we do to shut it down?
They don't have that authority.
If I might say something, just a minute. I'd like to just say something real quick. First of all, this is no way to bring resolve to anything by too many people. I know we're all frustrated, but there's a way to talk it out and get the counsel of everybody, like I was sharing earlier, because, you know, with many minds involved, there's solution. You know, this is a, I like to say it like this, never make a permanent decision in a temporary situation. This is temporary, even though it's drug on for a year for a lot of us, but we've got to work it out together and talk it out. And as Brian was saying, I truly believe this council is behind the community.
I guess maybe if more of us did believe that, it would be easier, but a lot of us don't believe that.
I understand why you don't. I do, when there's threats of taking your license and stuff, and, you know, quite frankly, a license is a piece of paper. When you've got to feed your family and make a living, make a living, is the way I look at it. And then we'll deal with court issues as they come along, because, you know, quite frankly, we're all in the same boat here, but we've got to do it in a civil way and discuss it.
Host a town hall, that's my suggestion. You have a number of different church groups, host a town hall, put the word out, bring everyone there, figure out what can be done about it.
And if you gentlemen have not worn their masks, I ask you to please put them on. Dino, 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 could I have your mask on?
What?
Could you please put your mask on, please? Thank you. All right. We understand the frustration. Everybody's frustrated. The problem is, as Larry pointed out, you don't know from one day to the next, one week from the next, what's going to happen. If we knew what was going to happen and we could prepare for it, with this yesterday and no tomorrow and yesterday...
You can't live like that.
We understand that that is, and not only is it killing people financially, but it's killing people emotionally.
I'm sorry, I did not come here tonight to speak, in fact, I'm quite nervous that you may need to do so. My name is Paula McMillan. I live at 747 E Court Southwest near Bandon. I'm a single mother of three, I'm childling each of these schools. I am a substitute teacher at the district, although I can't work right now because there's no substitute in the first place. But I'll tell you, I know just about every kid in this town, and I've had three parents in the last three months call me up and say, "Oh, my God, Paula, what do I do? My fourth waiter is talking about suicide. My ninth waiter's talking about suicide. And now they're shutting down the schools again. If we have the school board to get off their butt and stand up, would you back them? That's my question. I don't want to see a kid die.
Sorry.
You know, she said a lot of too, you know...
You guys, we understand. I know this is, I know how hard it is, and it does seem, as Dan pointed out, and Lynn pointed out, it does seem that the restrictions are falling on one group of, on one group.
It is.
Mostly the restaurants and the bars.
It's because she has that OLCC and that lottery gun to our head, and that's extortion.
It is.
Now, you want to take, my name's Dan Barnett.
Hey, Dan, you better, but keep it under three minutes.
Oh, shit, under three minutes. I'll talk back. You know who I am, Dan Barnett. Billy Smith Horse. If I violate OLCC law, I have a commitment to the OLCC to abide by their rules. Their rules are, I don't serve minors. I don't bring alcohol in that isn't state alcohol. But they don't have a right to tell me that I have to close my business or I'm going to take that license. I didn't violate anything on my contract with them to hold that license. So how can you hold that against me and say, "No, you can't have it now"? That's, I mean, again, I know we're talking constitutional law, and you guys can't do anything about that, but the frustration levels are getting out of...
I know it. I know it.
I can't. If they close me down again, Lynn and I aren't hurting, because we're smart business people. But a lot of people live check to check.
Yes, they do.
Day to day. But what we can't handle, we can't buy inventory and be open two weeks and then close down and I lose $10,000 worth of crap in my, that I was going to sell. And then you're open, she freezes us for two weeks. Four days later, she lets, she comes on and says, "Oh, we're going to do the other phase, 25 people in the bay." What changed in the four days? You talk to me about the science. Nothing changed with the science in four days. It is dictatorship. It is running our lives, and I personally, I can't deal with it much more. And I can't lose another $10,000 worth of inventory every two weeks at her whim, when she decides, "Oh, close, open, oh, wait, 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 wait two days and I'll tell you."
I know, and it's suddenly going to get worse.
Man, I personally signed a recall petition, okay? I bet most of the people...
Oh, boy.
Yeah, a lot of good that did with the voting system.
We've got a recall for right now.
Yeah, but you know what, when you got the fox guarding the hen house?
Yeah, that's right.
You know what I mean? Don't tell me, because I'll tell you what, we weren't even going to get into the presidential situation. You know, we got the fox guarding the hen house. It depends on who's counting the votes.
Man, it's not what we say, it's what can my city council do for Bandon?
Instead of saying we can't do it.
Don't say you can't do it.
What can you do?
Mary's.
How can you help?
I guess we could ask the city attorney what our jurisdiction is. I believe he would probably... In fact, we may, we may talk to him and see just exactly what he thinks. I know that more and more, I know that people are taking a position against shutting down, against...
You can't.
But I don't know that it's going to hold up in court. That's the problem.
Court or not, they have to get through, they have to get into town.
Rob, Lynn, sorry. Fred, what do you think?
We appreciate the, I...
That's what they do. That's what they do.
Stand there.
And would be sure and support the local merchants while they're open, and if they're open for takeout, please support the local merchants, please. please support the local merchants, please. Come on, we're gonna, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a. That's killing most of the pride.
So, we got through public comments, Mayor, council comments, and they're avoiding the exact.
Now, we're going to have to go into the meeting Friday night.
I believe the next thing is to keep, uh, the primary emergency meeting. Okay, so. One, one, one action that we.
On the second page, if you have a Q R document scanned, I'll get you the, the post documents. This one will get you.
See, I have the last talk.
Why you gotta be so loud?
They don't like.
Oh, they do. You're really loud.
That's what you're going through your head if you told you to stop yelling.
Okay, I'm outta here. By the way, Litch, I already said, "Hey, you wanna put the cops on, bro?" I've never seen cops here, ever. He says they keep coming, huh? I said, "What?"
We need you to join us and unite. Thank you, Rob. See you later, man.
Later, bro. Hey, Dan, nice, hey, I'm serious. I've never been here. And I'm going now. Do you allow alcohol consumption?
Yes.
I'm coming. You promise that'd be your worst thing ever?
I said your first one. I didn't say your last one.
No, 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 it's a.
Your first grade was open, but sixth or senior could not go to school. What was that about? We cannot allow this tyranny to occur to our children. We cannot allow them to learn this as a norm. We must fight the tyranny. We must fight the dictatorship. The time to open up is now. If we do not stand for children, if we do not stand for women, if we do not stand for the elderly, then what do we stand for? It's time to wake up. It's time to unite. It is time for freedom in America again. We need you to join us. Time to unite is now. United we stand tall, divided we fall.
I'm sorry, Mitter, it was you answering. I have a cloud.
I called him, what he said?
Said, "Hey, no, I mean, you know what? I, I don't know if she knows."
How much tyranny will we take? As much as we will allow. It's gonna make a difference, and we start all speaking. They need to hear that we are demanding them to stand alongside us, and we need to spread that support to our business compatriots and encourage them all to stand up and defy the OLCC. That's where the rub is. It's the OLCC. We will have the website, and we'll have a Facebook page put up sometime very soon. I'm not personally doing it, but I'm, I'm putting the data in, out there so that they can do it. Dan's got people working on it, so that'll be happening in the next few days. And by the way, the website, when it comes up, it's gonna be Coos County Declaration dot com.
Yeah, you're right.
Right?
Brother. Scotty's wife is gonna run for mayor.